Holy Spirit God, we worship you. Worship in the holy trinity. Oh Father God, we worship you. Son Jesus, we worship you. Holy Spirit God, we worship you. Worship in the holy trinity. Father God, we worship you. Son Jesus, we worship you. Holy Spirit God, we worship you. Worship in the holy trinity. Oh Father God, we worship you. Son Jesus, we worship you. Holy Spirit God, we worship you. Worship in the holy trinity. Oh Father God, we worship you. Son Jesus, we worship you. Holy Spirit God, we worship you. Worship in the holy trinity. Oh Father God, we worship you. Son Jesus, we worship you. Holy Spirit God, we worship you. Worshiping the holy trinity. (Singing in Hebrew) (Singing in Hebrew) Worshiping the holy trinity. Father God, we worship you. Son Jesus, we worship you. Holy Spirit God, we worship you. Oh, worshiping the holy trinity. Father God, we worship you. Son Jesus, we worship you. Holy Spirit God, we worship you. Worshiping the holy trinity. Father God, we worship you. Son Jesus, we worship you. Holy Spirit God, we worship you. Worship in the holy trinity. Worshiping the holy trinity. Oh Father God, we worship you. Son Jesus, we worship you. Holy Spirit God, we worship you. Worship in the holy trinity. Oh Father God, we worship you. Son Jesus, we worship you. Holy Spirit God, we worship you. Worshiping the holy trinity. Father God, we worship you. Son Jesus, we worship you. Holy Spirit God, we worship you. Worshiping the holy trinity. Father God, we worship you. Son Jesus, we worship you. Holy Spirit God, we worship you. Worshiping the holy trinity. Father God, we worship you. Son Jesus, we worship you. Holy Spirit God, we worship you. Worshiping the holy trinity. Son Jesus, we worship you. Holy Spirit God, we worship you. Worshiping the holy trinity. Father God, we worship you. Son Jesus, we worship you. Holy Spirit God, we worship you. Worshiping the holy trinity. Father God, we worship you. Son Jesus, we worship you.
Holy Spirit is in us, is with us, is for us. Believe it, confess it, say it through your mouth. Tonight is the night that you are entering into the love of the Father, grace of our Lord Jesus, powerful communion of the Holy Spirit. And fourth thing, very specially this October month, Mother Mary, her powerful intercession is for each and every one of us. Mother Mary, at the foot of the cross, please do pray for us.
Mother Mary.
At the foot of the cross, please do pray for us. Mother Mary, at the foot of the cross, please do pray for us. Mother Mary, at the foot of the cross, please do pray for us. Mary, at the foot of the cross, please do pray for us. Mother Mary. Mother Mary, at the foot of the cross, please do pray for us. Mother Mary, at the foot of the cross, please do pray for us. Mother Mary, at the foot of the cross, please do pray for us. Mother Mary, at the foot of the cross, please do pray for us.
Mother Mary.
At the foot of the cross, please do pray for us. Sing it louder. Mother Mary, at the foot of the cross, please do pray for us. Lord, I remember all those who are joining this special YouTube broadcast. I remember and I pray for Sandra Brito. I pray here for Sunida Dzuzza. I am praying for all those who are joining online today, Lord Jesus. Staphen Nazret, Zimran Arroja, Sanda David, Jodi Mathias. Praying for Jessica's good college admission in Jesus' name. Selena Fernandez, Avita Was, praying for you. Eugene, praying for you sister. Hallelujah. Thank you, thank you my dear ones. Thank you for joining this special live broadcast. Oh my God, Praveen Avinash, Rupa Ramesh, praying for all of you. Thank you so much for joining through these YouTube sessions. Sujatha, Walton Naronna, Remo Fernandez, Royston, Rosna, Babu, Kingston, praying for you all. Ulas, Valanka, Valanka praying, Oscar Goncalves praying for you. Sharon Milton. This is going to be an exclusive love live session on our Heavenly Father. So before we enter into this session, let us mark ourselves, sign ourselves with the sign of the cross. Name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Hail Mary, full of grace. Lord is with thee, blessed are thou among women. Blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners now and the hour of our death, amen. Hail Mary, full of grace, Lord is with thee, blessed are thou among women. Blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners now and the hour of our death, amen. Hail Mary, full of grace, Lord is with thee, blessed are thou among women. Blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners now and the hour of our death, amen. Glory be to the Father, Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Hallelujah. Thank you, Lord Jesus. I thought of giving this special session on our Heavenly Father series. As we all know, we are in the continuous teaching on our Heavenly Father. This Sunday, we are starting, this Monday evening, we are starting 10 days of Israel pilgrimage, special tour and special teaching. You will be getting live from different parts of Israel, where Jesus walked, where Jesus died, where Jesus lived. You will be getting live broadcasts from, from the place Jesus walked. So I encourage all of you to join, especially from Israel. This week, this weekend is going to be very glorious with the presence of God Almighty. So this is Gospel, not Gospel of John, this is Epistle of John. Epistle of John, first epistle of John, chapter number four, verse number nine. If, if, first epistle of Saint John, chapter number four, verse number nine. In this, in this, in this is love. This is very, very interesting verse. I, I think I should start from verse number nine, then only we will be able to understand what is, God is revealing here. This is first John, chapter four, verses nine. First John, first John, chapter four, verses nine. God's love was revealed among us in this way. First John, four, nine. I want all of you to get this verse. This is very, very important to understand the love of the Father. First John, chapter four, verses nine. God's love was revealed among us in this way. God's love was revealed among us in this way. God's love was revealed among us in this way. So Saint John is trying to explain how God's love has been revealed, how God's love has been manifested. There are many demonstrations of God's love. But what is the ultimate revelation or revealing of God's love? This is the question of the common usually ask. What is the exact expression, ultimate expression of God's love? So the John, Saint John is trying to explain what is the real way, or what is the real expression of God's love? So this, the, this particular verse goes like this. Saint John, epistle, first epistle, chapter number four, verse number nine. God's love was revealed among us in this way. Particular way, in this particular way. What is that way? God sent his only son into the world so that we might live through him. So God's love is manifested or revealed in this way. In this particular way. What way? What way God's love has been revealed? Look at that second part. God sent his son to the world. God sent his son to the world. So God is love, that is the paragraph where we are in. Epistle of John, chapter number four. When you start the first epistle of John, chapter number four, verse number seven, you can see the headline, headings goes like, "God is love." So John is trying to, Saint John is trying to unveil, how come God is love, or what is the exact expression of God's love? Then this is, the second part of this particular verse nine is very important. God sent his own son, his only son into the world so that we might live through him. So God's love is manifested in the sending of his only begotten son. Hallelujah. So God is love, but God's love has been manifested in one single thing. What is that one single thing? That is what we read here. God's love is being manifested. God's love was revealed among us this way. God sent his own, his only son, his only son, only son whom he loved the most. That's the word. Come on. God's only son whom he loved the most. Hallelujah. When are you giving the best to someone you love? When you are in a full sense of love, or in the fullness of love, you will be able to give or provide the best for the loved ones. See, two, two dimension you are seeing here in God's love. God so loved the world. God loves his son. Love towards us and love towards his only son. Okay? One hand, it is the love, love of God for whole humanity. Other hand, the love towards his son. Now, what God did, what God, God the Father did, this verse says, "God sent his only son into the world for us." So one hand it is you and me, other hand it is Jesus himself. Other hand, one hand it is you, the sinner, the worst sinner. Other hand, Jesus, holy God. See, Father's decision is this. I will spare my son. I will send my son, send my only son. Hallelujah. I will send my only son. What is the other part? What is the second part? Second part it says, "I will send my only son to the world so that we might live through him." We are living through him. Through what? Through Jesus Christ. So God sent his son. Through him, we might live. So now we have a life that is through him, through Jesus. Through Jesus Christ, we have a life. What is the reason, through Jesus Christ, we have a life? That's the first part. God so loved the world this way, oh, look at that. God's love was revealed among us this way. What way? God sent his only begotten son. So God's face, the exact expression of God's love. We are seeing where, where God sent his only begotten son for us. Why God sent his only begotten son for us? Then the second part it says, that we might live through him. You have a possibility of life. You have a new life which is given to us. We live through him. He is the source of your life. In him you live, in him you move, in him you reign. For that only, God sent his son. So this way I can say, I can tell you this way, okay? There is no life without Jesus. If there is no, there is a life without Jesus, then God will never send or spare his only begotten son for an atonement of our sins. That is the second part of this particular verse. Look at this verse ten. In this is love. In this is love. Not that we loved God, but the love, he loved us and sent his own, his son to be the atonement, atoning sacrifice for our sins. This is verse number ten. In this is love. Not that we loved God, but that he loved us. He loved us and sent his son to be an atoning sacrifice for our sins. Jesus became an atonings, atonement, atoning sacrifice for our sins. This is where we are seeing the love of the Father. This is where we are getting a clear understanding of the love of the Father. Bible says, "God is love." When, when Bible say, "God is love," catechism of the Catholic Church, this is, this, this teaching is very, very important and very, very essential. If you want to learn this more and more, I encourage you to go through catechism of the Catholic Church, especially paragraph two eighteen. Paragraph two eighteen to, all the way down, two nineteen and if you, two eighteen to two twenty-one of catechism of the Catholic Church reveals the real meaning of "God is love." Two ways it has been explained. If you would like, you want me to read, I can read the catechism of the Catholic Church from paragraph two eighteen to two twenty-one. Church has explained it in a better way and the conclusion goes like this. The very nature of God is love. And everything he does flows from this perfect love. God is love. God's love is eternal, free, unconditional, and faithful even when we were unfaithful. God's love is eternal. From that eternal love only, God followed Israel. From that eternal love only, God followed the patriarchs. From this eternal love only, God is following you and me. From his love only, he is doing everything. Hallelujah. God sent his son. That's what we read here in Epistle of John, chapter number four, first epistle, chapter number four. This is the way, this is the ultimate expression of God's love. So that we can live in him. He became an atonement for our sins. Who? Jesus became an atonement for our sins. Since Jesus became an atonement for my sins, I have got a guarantee. What is that guarantee? I can live with his life. So God loved us so much. He has loved us unconditionally. Each one of us being loved by the Father unconditionally, eternally, inseparably, without any limit, unlimited. He has loved us. This is the place where we are allowing ourselves with God. God, this love, this love that you are loving me, sparing your only begotten son and adopting me into the family of God. Oh my God, this is something mystery, mysterious. I'm able, I'm unable to comprehend this. I'm unable to bear this. What kind of this, what kind of love towards me? Sparing the holy God and choosing a worst sinner. Look at that picture. Sparing his only begotten son and the other left side and holding me, the worst sinner of this world, towards him. Their father was expressing his unconditional love. He was telling, "This is me. This is me that I'm loving you unconditionally, my son." That real expression. What is the result of that real expression of God's love? We have got a life in Christ. When I say the life in Christ, you may be wondering, hey brother, what do you, what do you mean by the life in Christ? Let me read that verse again for you. This is very, very important. The second part of this verse number nine of first, first epistle of John, chapter number four, verse number nine. Look at this. God's love was revealed among us in this way. In this way, God sent his only son into the world so that, what is the result of God sent his only begotten son, only son to the world? So that we might live through him. This is the possibility we have got. We might live, we might live through him. You will through, live through him. Say it louder. I will live through him. Say it louder. I will live through him. Hallelujah. Say it louder. I will live through him. My dear friend, no matter what you're going through today, this is the promise of God. You will live through him. Say it louder. I will... Write it in the comment box, write it in the comment box, please. Those who are joining online, I want all of you, those who are joining online, please write it to the comment section that "I will live through him." All of you, write it down. "I will live through him." You are always thinking, "How I will face tomorrow? What is going to happen tomorrow?" I'm telling you, I'm telling you now. You will live through him. No doubt, no doubt, no doubt, no doubt. This financial situation, circumstances, what you're going through is not an end. Remember this promise, write it down. Those who are joining online, I'm telling you, please write it down. Maybe in the comment section, maybe in your notebook. "I will live through him. I will live through him. I can face tomorrow through him." Who, who, through whom? "He became an atonement for my sins." Hallelujah. If I have not, this life is not being given to me through Jesus Christ. Father will never tell us that you will live through him. This is the guarantee. You will live through him. This is the assurance that you will live through him. This is the confidence you have today that you will live through him. Say it louder. "I will live through him." Say it louder, say it louder. "I will..." Oh, many are writing here. Dania is writing, "I can face tomorrow." Valencia is writing, "I will live through him." Nathan Disusa is writing, oh, many are writing here. Thank you, brother and sister, thank you so much. Yes, take it, take it. Rosmari, take it. Jolene, take it. Doctor Delma, Doctor Delma. "I will live through him. I will live through him." Say it louder. Write it down, write it down. This is very, very powerful. Take it, take it, take it. Elizabeth, take it, take it, take it. I am prophesying over your lives, over your lives, over your financial situation. "I will live through him." Hallelujah. Which verse is that? This is Epistle of John, chapter number four, verse number nine. The last part of this verse says, "We might live through him." Ah, we, I must live through him. We might live through him. Take it, take it, take it. "In the name of Jesus." Hallelujah. Anita Joseph, I'm, I'm reading your comment. "God, please have mercy on me. Please give me a job. Already my family members are laughing at me in this situation. My mom and myself crying every day before you. Please give an answer." This is Anita Joseph in the Titleist official YouTube channel, I'm getting your comment here. Sister Anita, let me call you by name and tell you, and let me prophesy over your life. "You will live through him. Because you are the product of the ultimate expression of God's love." This is the way God revealed his love, through sending his only begotten son. This is the way God manifested his love, through sending his only begotten son to us. When that son is being sent, when that son is being died on the cross, when that son, in the last word on the cross, Jesus said, "It is finished." Titleist high, there he was opening a new door that you can live through him. "I can live through him." Say it louder. "I can live through him." Hallelujah. Say it, say it, say it. I'm, I'm, I'm making this prophecy over your life. "I can live, I can live through him. I can live through him. I can live through him. I can live through him." No matter how many of them want to see your tears. We want to say, celebrate your failure, we will celebrate. Let's see. "I will live through him." Say it. "I will live through him." Say it louder. "I will live through him. I will live through him. I will, I will live..." "Through him." Yes Lord, yes Lord, yes Lord. Yes Lord, yes Lord, yes Lord. "In the name of Jesus, prophesying over their life, prophesying over their life. I am prophesying over their life. I believe. I believe through him. I believe..." "Hey, I believe through him. I believe..." "Through him." Take it, take it, take it, take it. "In Jesus' name." "Hey, through him. I believe. Through him." "Live through him." Take it, take it, take it. "I believe. Through him. I believe. I believe. Through him. I believe." Beloved, since God loved you so much. Look at this verse, verse 11. Beloved, since God loves you so much. Since God loves you so much. Since God loves you so much. What a beautiful verse. Beloved, since God loved us so much. Beloved, God loved you so much. That love is around you, that love is behind you, that love is before you, that love is in the left, in the right. There is no other cause for you to live. There is no other cause, reason for you to live. There is no other thing for you to live. You will survive just because he has loved you so much. Take it, take it, take it, take it. "He has loved you so much." This is not the word of Sajid. Read this verse, beloved. Put that verse in screen, please. This is Epistle of John, chapter four, verses 10 and 11, 11. Beloved, since God loved us so much. Beloved, since God loved us so much. "God loves me unconditionally." "I believe through him." "I believe through him." You believe, you believe, you believe, you believe. "And through him, I believe. Oh, through him." Yes Lord. "Hey, I believe. Through him." Yes Lord. "I believe. Through him." Say it, take it, take it, take it. "I will live through him. I will live..." Yes Lord. "I will live through him." Beloved, since God loved us so much. Kinsey. Give me a second. This word says, verse 11. "Since God loved us so much." What is there for you? The love of God. I told you at the beginning. One side it is, Jesus who never sinned. Other side it is you, the worst sinner. Whom to leave, whom to hold. Whom to hold and whom to leave. Other side, the worst unfaithful, worst sinner. One side, the most faithful, the most loving, the most holy, beloved son. Other side, unfaithful, sinner, always breaks the promise. Unfaithful to the prayer life, unfaithful to the personal life, private life. Whom to leave, whom to forsake, whom to hold. Whom to hold, whom to leave. I thought, "Father will hold Jesus." Because I am the worst sinner. I am the prodigal son who left the house. I am the prodigal son who is disobedient, who lost all the father's possession and possession. I thought, "Father will leave me and Father will hold Jesus." All heaven was silent, silent and silent. They were all waiting to see whom Father will hold, whom Father will leave. The purest form of gospel. God so loved the world. His unconditional love towards us. Whom to hold, whom to leave. Whom to hold, whom to leave. Whom to hold, whom to leave. Hey, whom to hold, whom to leave. Then Epistle of John says, "So much of..." Whom to hold, whom to forsake. Whom to hold, whom to forsake. Whom to hold, whom to forsake. Father, Father, why you forsaken me? It is not the cry of a sinner. It is the cry of the most holy. It is not a cry of the worst sinner. It is the cry of the most... "Father, Father, why you forsaken me?" Whom to hold, whom to forsake. 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 Whom to hold. Turn to the Lord today. He's calling you, come back. Hey, your praise is more than anything to the Father. Whom to hold, whom to forsake. 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 Say it louder. Whom to hold, whom to forsake. Whom to hold. Whom to hold. He was holding you. Father was holding you, that's why this verse says, what did the verse says? "Since..." "Since..." Beloved, verse number 11, verse number 11. I want you to read that, please, please, please. I want you to read that. Beloved, since God loves us so much, we also ought, ought to love one another. Beloved, since God loved us so much. Beloved, since God loved us so much. So much he has loved us. So much he has loved us. So much he has loved us. Whom to hold, whom to forsake. Whom to hold. Hey, who told you, you are not important? Who told you, you are not, not precious to God? Who told you, you are not in the palm of cotton? Who told you, you are alone? Who told you, you are going to end up? Hey, hey. Whom to hold, whom to forsake. Kinsey. Whom to hold. Whom to hold. Whom to hold, whom to forsake. Whom to avoid, whom to hold. Jesus became an atonement. The cry of Gethsemane is the cry of Jesus. Who will believe this love? Holy, the most holy is spared. The most holy forsaken and the most sinner got adopted. That's why this verse says, "This is the manner, this is the way God demonstrated his love towards all of us. Whom to hold." Each time when you are saying through your mouth that, "I am not worthy. I am no, I am useless. I am not, I am not according to God's will." Each time you are denying the cross and the crucifixion, atonement of Jesus. If you were not important, if you were not most important or most loved, he will never spare. He will never send. Father will never send his son as an atonement for your sins. Since you are very precious, that's why he has spared the most precious. Since you are very precious, that's why He has spared the most precious. From this understanding, if you pray today, "Oh God, I know you love me so much", say it louder, say it louder. If you're watching, more than thousand people are joining through online. I'm just seeing only one YouTube channel, but I can see more than thousands are joining through YouTube. Just say it. This love is the reason for your victory. That's why Bible says, "We are more than conquerors through God who loved us." Let me repeat that word again. You are more than conquerors. Bible not says you are a conqueror. You are more than conqueror through the God whom has loved us. And it says, "Nothing can separate us from the love of God." You are unconditionally loved, eternally loved, inseparably loved by the Father through Jesus Christ. Whom to hold? I want you to sing this song tonight. I want you to sing this song tonight. Whom to hold, whom to forsake? Say, "Gurakama, sumkoko." Whom to forsake? Shalaramehesia. Whom to hold, whom to forsake? Whom to hold, whom to forsake? Who to hold, who to forsake? Let me tell you this, hold on, hold on, let me tell you this. If you are getting a chance to select, what will be your selection? One side it is most holy, other side the most worst sinner whom you will select. Definitely I will select. Have you ever choose a fruit that is not good from the shop, from the food shop? No problem, that apple is not good, but it's okay, I'm taking it. You will never do that. You will try to avoid it. If you are giving job, will you give job for someone is not qualified? Nowhere it is possible. When I am choosing someone for job, I will choose the best one. You will choose the best one. Why? You need different proposal for the wedding, marriage? This girl is not good, that boy is not good. Don't worry, you will get yours, okay? Now worries. Whom? Whom to hold? Are you in that confusion? Whom to hold, whom to forsake? I will never choose... You will never select something weird, something not good. If you are choosing something which is weird or not good, ugly, though it is ugly, if you are selecting it, I will tell you, you are in love with that particular thing. It's okay, that weakness is okay. That man has this weakness, still I'm okay. Without feeling with the love, you cannot say that. When God's... When Almighty God was selecting and choosing you, you can imagine how much He was loving you. That's why it says this word of God. Beloved, beloved! Look at that, look, look, look at that. Beloved, since God loved us so much! Whom to forgive? Let me read this verse and pray for you all. This is very, 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 very important verse. I think I will be explaining this one more coming days. Please hold on through YouTube. God, God's love was revealed among us in this way, this particular way. God's love has been demonstrated. Verse nine, verse nine, verse nine. God's love was revealed among us in this way. God sent His only Son into the world so that we might live through Him. Beneficiary is you. God sent His Son and the beneficiary is you. What benefit you got? You can live, you can live through Him. That's the confidence. No matter what challenges you are going through, say it through your mouth, "I will live through Him." I will enter, conquer, occupy. That's the love God has given me. The love around me, the love that's surrounding me has the power, has the power to conquer, to build, to capture. Say those words in the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus. Today, I have four major prophecies to prophesy over your life and pray for you. Because when I was preparing for this... Nice. Those who are joining online, you are getting a chance to put your vote now. Whom you will select? That's nice. Whom do you select? Most sinner or most holy one? Now it's your turn, you can maybe put your vote. I will put the first one, the most holy one, the most good one, the most beautiful one, the best one I will choose. But God never say that. If God said so, I will never be here. If God said so, I will be, you will never be here. You will never be joining this life. God said what? Get, 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 get that worst sinner. Get that unfaithful servant. Hey, get him, get him, get him, let him come in. This is God's unconditional... That much He was in love with you. That much He was in love with you. That much He was loving you, He was in love with you. This is your heavenly Father. He is loving you more than you imagine. He is loving you beyond your understanding. He is loving you unconditionally. Let us come to the heavenly Father. Each time, why church is teaching us this prayer of heavenly Father who art in heaven? This prayer is very important? Why this prayer is very important? Each time you pray our heavenly Father, Father who our Father who art in heaven, hallowed by thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, thy... See, each time you pray, you are saying, "I am the beloved one of the Father. I am the most loved by the Father." Oh Jesus, your Father is loving you unconditionally. Tonight will be the night of blessing for you. You will be sleeping peacefully, you know why? You are loved so much! I have four major prophecy to prophesy over your life. Someone, listen, listen, these four prophecies, after this I'm gonna pray for you. I got this four messages, that's why it is there in my note. Few names also I got while I was praying. I will call those names also. Listen, listen very carefully. There's four major prophecies I'm prophesying over your life today. First of all, listen very carefully, first of all, someone who is going through unnecessary, unnecessarily stress, mood swings, depression, mental trauma. "I don't know brother, this is not me. My behavior is totally changed. I don't know, how am I reacting like this? These days I became more emotional. I think I lost my emotional balance." This kind of emotional imbalance issues. "I don't know why I'm angry towards my children, why I'm angry towards my husband, towards my wife, towards my colleagues, towards my friends. Whomever I'm dealing with, I'm very much offended. I'm offending them through my words. I'm always hurting them because of the mental trauma that I'm going through." This is unexpressible. You are unable to share this with anyone. Even if you share, no one will understand this. They will maybe telling you, "Go for a counseling that, this." Maybe you can go for some sort of counseling or whatever. Oh, consult a psychiatrist, psychologist, go for that, this. But I'm telling you, you need to understand, Jesus, who is the reason for your life, can treat your mind more than anyone else because He is the Creator. I'm telling you, the mood swings and the depression, the severe mental trauma what you are going through, tonight is the last night for that. Tonight is the last night for that trauma in the name of Jesus. Love of God has superpower. Bring the Trinity cross, bring the Trinity cross. Bring it, bring it, bring it, bring it, bring it. Stand here, stand here, stand here. Bring the Trinity cross. In the mighty name of Jesus. Those who are going through mental traumas, different kind of mood swings and mental traumas, release you through the authority of the cross. Through the priestly authority where we are, we have been submitted ourselves. In the mighty name of Jesus, we release... Oh, somebody is falling, falling, oh, somebody is falling from the chair where she has been sitting in the name of Jesus. Oh, Jesus, 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 I'm seeing, I'm seeing this, I'm seeing this. Someone from UK, someone from United Kingdom is joining online. Now Jesus is touching you and He is relieving you from the mental trauma. "I release the power of God for you in the mighty name of Jesus. Father, Son and Holy Spirit, love of the Father, grace of our Lord Jesus Christ and the powerful commandment of the Spirit. And I bind you and bound you, the Spirit behind it, in the name of Jesus." Those mental traumas, you cannot follow her anymore in Jesus mighty name. You cannot follow Him anymore in Jesus mighty name. This is a prophetical, a trend I'm making the prophecy over you. Your mind is stable, your mind is stable, you are free from all the mental traumas what devil has put it on you in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen. Secondly, this is the second prophecy, God told me to ask, tell you this. Listen very carefully. There is no proper reason why the members of the family quarreling each other, fighting each other, always misunderstandings. I have siblings, I have cousins, I have my niece, I have my nephews, I have many around me, but I am always getting misunderstood by others. And they are rejecting me instead of accepting me. Always getting misunderstood by the relatives, by the brothers, by the sisters, though they, you don't do anything against them. End of the day, it will be on you and they will blame you. All the blames will be upon you and you are asking this question. "When will you prove me, oh God? When my truth will come out among my brothers, among my cousins, among my siblings, among my relatives?" Always, someone is there. It's more than seven years going through blames one after another. I have this prophecy over your life, spirit of rejection. Always, you will be cornered into the corner. You will be set aside and you will be thrown out to a corner and they are blaming you. Blames, blames, blame, blame from the husband, blame from the wife, blame from the children, blame from the brothers, blames, blames, blames. Though you are doing good to everybody, no return good, blame, blame, blame. I pray in the mighty name of Jesus. That blame in the name of Jesus. Commanding that blame to leave them in the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus. Lord, you prove her. Lord, you prove her. Not only the place where I grow, not only the place where I born, even if I go for a spiritual fellowship, they will misunderstand me. My prayer leader is misunderstanding me. My priest is misunderstanding me. All my relationship is misunderstanding. Always I'm in, I'm living under a misunderstanding. In the name of Jesus, we break that barrier. We break that barrier in the name of Jesus. Let the power of God move mightily, move mightily, move mightily, move mightily in the mighty name of Jesus. Move mightily in the mighty name of Jesus. Number three, this is very, very important. This name I'm getting, this is Lovisha. I don't know how to pronounce that word correctly. It is Lovisha or Lovisha? Lovisha, it is Lovisha. This afternoon I'm getting, I was getting this name, Lovisha. I don't know whether Lovisha is joining online or not. But I'm getting a prophecy over her life. You are getting a blessing that is in your womb. Jesus is touching someone called Lovisha in her womb to be healed with a gift of child in the name of Jesus. And another name I, what I'm getting is, this is Anthony. Sometimes maybe we will pronounce that Anthony, this Anthony. This particular Anthony, this Anthony is in a financial fraud. He has fallen into a financial trap. There he is losing so much of money. I'm getting that name, Anthony, it is already there. I was writing and keeping because those names I got when I was planning for this particular life. Anthony, I'm telling you Anthony, believe. Whom to hold, whom to forsake? Whom to hold? Talanane, shadara. Zantane, larteni. Whom to hold, whom to forsake? Yes, 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 yes. Whom to hold, whom to forsake? Anthony, he was not forsaking you. He was forsaking his son. He has let his son as an atonement for your sins, same time he was saving you. So I pray this prayer especially for Anthony. I don't know how you, who do you pronounce that name, Anthony or Anthony? Come out of that financial fraud, come out of that financial problem in the mighty name of Jesus. In the mighty name of Jesus, we prophesy prosperity over your life. We prophesy God's mighty anointing over your life. Let the power of God move now, the name of Jesus. Love of the Father, grace of our Lord Jesus. Powerful communion of the Holy Spirit may move into your life in the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus, 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 in the name of Jesus. This last prophecy, what I'm making today is very, very important. Listen, listen, why I'm saying this, this is one is very important. Okay, listen. This particular sickness, you have a list of diseases and you are saying, this particular diseases, why this is following my family? Is there any reason? And you are connecting incidents? Connecting incidents? You are connecting incidents and you were saying, see, the, there is certain things in the past, that's why these sicknesses is behind us and you have the list of concerns that you are connecting always. They did this, they did that. Because of that only I'm suffering this. Like that, you have many past memories that is haunting you, not allowing you to move forward. Listen, this is very important, I will tell you. Each time when you are feeling sickness, you will connect the incidents. They gave something to drink, that's why this problem. That time that person came into my house, she was cursing me, that's why this issue. She was cursing, she was speaking all the bad words against me, that's why I'm suffering with this. Like that, this is a specific issue, listen very carefully. Each time, whenever you have this downfall, you will bring your past and you will say, I'm suffering this because of that, because of this. Maybe that's your past sin, maybe in the, maybe in the past somebody has cursed you. Maybe in the past somebody has spoken bad words on you. Some, somewhere you are believing the evil eye, sorcery, some sort of witchcraft. But I'm telling you today, okay? If you want to explain this particular thing more, I will explain because this is the most area God, this is the, this is the, this is the area God is sending his Holy Spirit to that. And setting, each time when you have downfalls, you are connecting the incidents because of this, because of that. Like that, those connections is getting disconnected today by the power of the Holy Spirit. Your past cannot haunt you since your past is being washed, cleansed, nailed on the cross. The old record that stood against you is being blotted out with its legal demands. No past can't follow you. Stop connecting the incidents. Start believing in the finished work of Jesus on the cross. Say, "Tetelastai." Tetelastai. Say the word Tetelastai. It is powerful for you. It will be powerful for you. Do not allow those past to haunt you anymore, come out of it. Oh, more than 273 of them are delivered through this particular prophecy. The last prophecy for this session, fourth one, listen very carefully. Each time when you have some downfalls, you will connect the incident. Oh, the place where we built this house, the place where we, the moment we entered into this house, this problem started. You understand what I'm saying? Brother, are you following me? You, you got it? Connecting the incidents by saying, this is because of that, that is because of this. See, if you have a tummy ache, immediately you will say, oh, three years back, someone gave them some drink. That drink is still working on me in a negative way, understand? This sort of bondage, nearly 300 people, 300 of you are already under this bondage, but I'm telling you, in the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus, come out. Around 1500 people are joining online now from one YouTube channel. But I'm telling you now, in the name of Jesus, nearly 300, now 300 people connecting the incidents, 10 years back, 20 years back, when I was small. Like that, you understand? When I was small, when she came to our house, when, first time when I went there. When, when I had that particular problem, when I, when I, when I have this issue, connecting the past issues, past memories, past incidents into the present and saying, this will not leave me. Until I, until I die, this will not leave me. But I'm telling you, if you are still believing those things, it can be generational curse, it can be anything, if it can follow you, then why father loved you so much? Hey hey. That's enough for you, my friend. He has loved you so much, there breaks, there brokes, every past is been washed and cleansed. Hail Mary, full of grace, Lord is with thee, blessed art thou among women. Help us, Mother Mary, blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners, now and the hour of our death, amen. Say louder, hail Mary, full of grace, Lord is with thee, blessed are thou among women. Blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners, now and the hour of our death, amen. Say, if you have your rosary with you, take this in your right hand now and say it louder. Hail Mary, full of grace, Lord is with thee, blessed are thou among women. Blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners, now and the hour of our death. Something is happening so that I, I'm repeating you, I'm telling you repeatedly. Say seven times hail Mary. This is the fourth one. Hail Mary, full of grace, Lord is with thee, blessed are thou among women. Blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners, now and the power of our death, amen. Hail Mary, full of grace, Lord is with thee, blessed are thou among women. Blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners, now and the hour of our death, amen. Seventy-nine, louder, order you louder by lifting your right hand. Hail Mary, full of grace, Lord is with thee, blessed are thou among women. Blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners, now and the hour of our death, amen. Hallelujah. Mother Mary, at the foot of the cross, please you pray for us. Mother Mary, at the... Again, 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 that fourth one, fourth one. Don't, do not ever connect your past to the present. Past is passed away, is gone. Jesus nailed it on the cross, blotted out it on the cross with its legal demand. Old is gone away. Completely you are new in Christ Jesus. Behold, see that things are new. In the name of Jesus, past sins, past sins, past sins, past downfalls, past memories, moral sins, accidental sins, occasional sins, habitual sins. In the mighty name of Jesus. Don't ever connect one incident to another. Each incident is different and everywhere, remember just one thing. Beloved, you so much, you are loved. Oh, can you, can you, can you, can you please put that verse? Can you please put that verse which is very, very powerful, oh my God? Gospel, Epistle of John, chapter number four, first John, chapter number four. Verse number 11, verse number 11, verse number 11, 11, 11, 11. Beloved, since God loved us so much. Since God loved us so much. That's your identity. Behold, since God loved you so much. Greet each other and say, behold, since God loved you so much. Hey, behold, since God loved you so much. From there only you have to make the other same, you cannot be a failure. Why? Behold, since God loved you so much, you cannot be a failure. Even if you want also, you cannot be a failure, you know why? Behold, since, ah, you, God loved you so much. Why you cannot be a failure? Tell me, why you cannot be a failure? Behold, since God loved you so much. Can you, can you write this one to somebody in your WhatsApp and encourage someone? If you have no one to encourage, please encourage me. Behold, say that, say that, prophecy over my life. You will get hundredfold back, say it. Behold, since God loved you so much, you cannot be a... Hallelujah. Behold, behold, since God loved you so much, you cannot be sick. Whom to hold? Whom to forsake? Whom to hold? Whom to forsake? Mother Mary. Mother Mary, at the cross, please you pray for us. Mother Mary. How many of you, how many of you are writing this in the comment section? Behold, since God loved you so much. Can you put this 11th verse on screen for some time? 11th verse, verse 11. Behold, since God loved you so much. Srinath, say it. Behold, since God loved you so much. Behold, ah, I'm putting this verse on screen just to read, just for you to read. Say it louder. Behold, since, since God loved you so much. Then you want whatever you want. Behold, since God loved you so much, what do you want to add? You cannot be a failure. Behold, since God loved you so much, you cannot continue in that sin. Behold, since God loved you so much, that joblessness can follow you. Behold, since God loved you so much, that infertility cannot disturb you anymore. Behold, since God loves you, loved you so much, you cannot be depressed. Hey, come on. Behold, since God loved you so much, you cannot be in loneliness. Say it, say it, you can say it. Behold, hey, put that verse on screen, man, it's, it's very powerful. Behold, since God loved us so much. Hey, this is a, come on, come on, come on. This is a personal message you can send to your friend. Send it today. They will ask you from where you got it, then you can quote this particular verse also. This is Epistle of John, first, first epistle of St. John. Chapter number four, verse number 11. Beloved, call them beloved, beloved, beloved. Since God loved us so much, when you say, you have to say beloved, okay? Since God loved you so much, you are a big success. God bless you all, have a good night. See you. We will be starting from Monday, we will be starting our YouTube sessions for Israel from Monday night, Monday night onwards, we will start from airport, from Bangalore airport. So for every day you will be getting live. Maybe 20 minutes, 10 minutes, maybe 50 minutes. Try to follow us, thank you so much. I'm, I'm telling you again and again, behold, since you are loved by God so much. Say it again, read that verse again, come on. Behold, since, can you put that verse on screen for few minutes? Beloved, since God loved you so much, you are a big success. Beloved, since God loved, loved you so much, your future is very blessed. Beloved, since God... Write your subjects, write your subjects in the comment section by reading this particular verse which is very, very important. I don't know what are you going through? Yes, somebody is writing like that. Behold, since God loves me so much, I cannot be in this financial crisis. Yes, yes, like that, like that, like that, write, write, write it, write it, write it. Write it, write it, write it. Behold, since God loved me so much, my family life is a big success. Someone, someone is writing about her family life, yes, Alexandria, write it. Behold, since, hey Maria, take it. Salim, in the name of Jesus, behold, since you are loved by the God, loved by God so much, you are a big success. I'm putting this verse for you and I'm singing in the background. Mother Mary, at the foot of the cross. Verse 11 on screen, verse 11. Mother Mary, at the foot of the cross, please you pray for us. Since you are loved so much. At the foot of the cross, please you pray for us. Beloved, since you are loved by the God. At the foot of the cross, please you pray for us. Mother Mary. Oh, please you pray for us. Hey, hey, Mother Mary, at the foot of the cross, please you pray for us.